This conference will now be recorded.
Hollis Center.
Yeah, that's really nice.
It is. It's, there was evidently a wedding or something going on.
They had Boy Scouts this weekend and as you can tell, they pulled their trailer.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number one on tonight's agenda is requests or comments from the public. Okay, come on up. You'll stick your name and your address. You'll have three minutes. When we get to about 30 seconds left, I'll give you a signal here so you know to wind it down.
My name's Dave Johnson. Can you hear me? All right. 105 South 102nd Terrace. I was at a meeting, a couple meetings back and they were talking about the roads and I agree with all the road input that y'all are looking at and it's appreciated. But on 102nd Street from K-32 to Edge Hill, it seems to have gotten missed and I just want to bring that to the attention of the council that that road with all the construction on it right now, it is just flat dangerous. And property taxes, I'm sure everybody's are hearing about the property taxes, which I'm not, I don't even know what to say about it to the council, but it is ridiculous. And thank you.
Okay. Going on to item number two, consider approval of the consent agenda items. Oh, also, if anyone from the council has any items they would like removed from the consent agenda, just let us know along with your question and we will remove it and discuss that separately.
May I make a motion to approve the consent agenda item as presented?
Second.
Move the motion in a second. Will the clerk please call?
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Stain was not here.
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Item number three on the agenda, consider items related to city council agenda development. Mr. Nye has brought up our, or put together a template basically, an ordinance that includes a couple of options like we discussed at the last workshop. And so I'll just let Mr. Nye go over that with us.
Thank you. So my goal in drafting this was to memorialize and codify form the scope of the conversation we had during our workshop session related to what I, as the newest member of the support staff, understand as the, what has been our historical practice regarding the development of meeting agendas and what ultimately may, the council may want to change as far as thresholds or anything like that. So I think I'll just walk through this. I, I did get a chance to share this with, with staff when they were getting ready to send it out. And I think at least from city manager and city clerk's standpoint, a couple of the things, general items that the council may want to consider is whether an ordinance versus a resolution would be, you know, most proper for something like this. I think when you, every pass an ordinance, obviously, the question is enforceability. Is there, do you really want kind of a protocol that you agree, can agree to as far as how we generally do, do things? Obviously, that protocol can be changed in the future. But is, so that was the first thing, what the expectations are in lieu, in the event that something, especially with regards to the time periods of the development of the preliminary agenda and the staff's responsibilities in that, what happens if a deadline is missed, something like that. So that would be one kind of overarching issue that to keep in the back of your mind as you're potentially codifying things into law that could be not met as a matter of, you know, somebody's sick or technical, you know, computer not working, something like that. And so I've done my best to kind of put names to things that may, I mean, these are my own terms frankly, to make a distinction between the preliminary meeting agenda and then that morphing into an approved, sorry, section two approved, proposed meeting agenda. And then going into, it's like I've got section four, it needs to be changed to three, the numbering. On page three of four, that would then be proposed. The approved, proposed meeting agenda would then be submitted to the council and then there'd be the question of addition to subsequent meeting agendas by the council at the conclusion of a meeting. So with that, I think I'll just walk through here. The whereas clauses obviously are not, are not law, so to speak. They're, they're more the policy behind the law that can be changed if there's anything the council doesn't like about how that's been drafted. But starting in section one, the following protocol shall be followed by all members of the governing board and city staff regarding development of preliminary draft agendas and finalized proposed agendas for consideration by the governing body at its regular meetings. First, the city manager, assisted by city staff, shall be responsible for developing a draft preliminary agenda for review by the mayor prior to the next regular meeting of the governing body. So that's the delegation to the city manager, which has happened historically, compiling a draft agenda. Next, during the period of time between the regular meetings, the city manager shall receive agenda item requests from the mayor and city council members as well as city staff and compile a list of requested agenda item. And that should be plural items as part of a draft preliminary agenda to be submitted to the mayor as provided in this section. Next, the city manager may use discretion in determining whether the agenda requests can be accommodated at the next meeting and included in the draft preliminary agenda draft. But each draft preliminary agenda shall include a list of all pending requests for additions to the draft preliminary agenda for review by the mayor. So what I'm getting at in subsection C is that when one of you asks for something to be put on the agenda and the city manager says, we've already got a huge agenda and the city manager makes a discretionary call to move that to an agenda in the future, we just can't accommodate it. That that would still be included on, from a transparency standpoint, in kind of the report of all pending requests to the mayor and that's something that could be inspected by the council at any point, these draft documents. And that's one thing to keep in mind, that the draft agenda, while it's being compiled and even once it's submitted to the mayor for review, is not an open record. Drafts and preliminary memoranda under the Kansas Open Records Act are not open records until they become finalized or shared in a public meeting. So that's the idea there, but obviously that can be changed if, if the council would like to basically give no, no discretion for determining what can be added if a council person asked it to be forced onto the agenda, so to speak. Next, the city manager, city staff, mayor and city council persons, and I need to standardize that, city council members shall adopt measures to prevent serial communications of the governing body that violate, to prevent serial communications of the governing body that violate the Kansas Open Meetings Act prohibition. That's 7543-18F against serial communications in the development of draft preliminary agenda. Such preventative measures include, but are not limited to, the use of one-way blind carbon copy emails to staff and other methods that prevent serial communications as defined by that statute. And I've got that listed out from the statute. Which I think is already the, the practice, but just a helpful reminder that blind carbon copy and one-way communication, as long as it doesn't become interactive, is okay as you kind of triangulate off a staff. And that's, that's developed. Next, the draft preliminary agenda shall be submitted to the mayor for review or modification no later than five days prior to the regular meeting of the board. An example is that the city manager shall send a mayor a draft preliminary agenda by closing business on Wednesday prior to a Monday regular meeting of the city council. Next, upon review, receipt and review of the draft preliminary agenda, the mayor may approve or modify the agenda prior to finalization. Upon approval of the original or modified draft preliminary agenda by the mayor in writing, the approved agenda shall be finalized as the finalized proposed agenda and distributed and published as further provided in this section. The mayor shall approve a finalized proposed agenda no later than 4:00 PM on the fourth day prior to the regular meeting, example being 4:00 PM on Thursday prior to a Monday meeting. I want to stop here. I'm sorry, let me go to one more and then I'll stop. Upon approval by the mayor, the city staff shall distribute the finalized proposed agenda that the city council members know later than close of business, four days prior to the regular meeting, example 5:00 PM on that same Thursday before a Monday meeting. There is concern from staff that that one hour turnaround, especially if it's in ordinance, you know, it's law, so to speak, may not be able to be met sometimes. So these are proposed times. And so I just want, want to throw that out there. As, as you've discussed, these times aren't set in stone, we just need to find what the expectation is. Next, upon approval by the mayor and distribution to the city council, the city staff shall publish the finalized proposed agenda no later than close of business, three days prior to the regular meeting. So 5:00 PM Friday prior to a Monday regular meeting. So that's, it becomes, it's published to the public on the next day. So the council theoretically under this would have 24 hours to review and kind of get a heads up of what's coming, what the public will see the next day. The draft preliminary agenda and finalized proposed agenda shall be available for inspection by the mayor and members of the city council upon request. But the draft preliminary agenda shall not be considered an open record pursuant to KSA 45221820, which is the draft and preliminary memorandum, exception to the public records. That what I'm getting after here is basically that even though it's not an open record to the public, the city council can inspect and compare what was proposed by staff and what was the ultimate one that was either approved or modified by the city mayor. So you can see what's being taken off or added or whatever. So I guess that would be the place to stop, to ask, is that the process the body wants? Are there changes, discussion?
Based on that comment, the draft preliminary agenda and finalized proposed agenda shall be available for inspection by the mayor, I would, if you go back up to item number E, I think under that spirit, that the preliminary agenda should be submitted to the mayor and the council at that time. And so, you know, we're talking about transparency here, so this would be trans, very transparent to the members of the council. And my, my thought is, what if the city manager believes that, or has a developer that brought some materials to him and it, and it needs to be put on the agenda? And the mayor doesn't want it on the agenda, so the mayor would leave it off the agenda, which puts the city manager in a really bad spot because it puts him between the council and, and the developer. And so I think if we change that language in E, which brings up another question, could this be done in policy as opposed to law? Could we accomplish the same thing?
Yes. I don't, I'm a little unclear how an ordinance would even be enforced because the body basically can suspend the rules. It really is a rules package that, that would be agreed to ahead of time by the body to say this is generally how it's going to work, but that can be done in policy or a resolution as that was suggested by.
It just seems to be a lot simpler that way and then it just seems like a lot of work and a lot of details. I'm thinking, you know, the one hour deal, I'm thinking, what if staff is out at a meeting somewhere and, and we're trying to squeeze them into an hour timeframe on a certain day? It just seems, we're, we're just becoming so specific that it's almost impossible to follow and, and doesn't really take into account any exceptions.
So, and I'll give a little bit of clarity as well. When this first came about, it was simply a transparency ordinance, not a full agenda setting ordinance. That was, and I had talked to Mike about this and he said the way to go about that, if we don't want items added the night of a meeting, is to set an ordinance. That was the way to do it. And so that's why we asked for an ordinance instead of a resolution. It was based on recommendation from our city manager. The reason that we're going into such great detail is at the request of the council because questions came up when we were discussing the not adding an item the night of the meeting. There was, okay, well, now we need to discuss how does an agenda come about? And how do items go on the agenda? What if, concerns about executive sessions being added to an agenda? Concerns about what if the mayor's blocking items and we can't, you know, how does council member put something on the agenda? So it was at the council's request that we went into such great detail during our workshop to, to bring this about. And I think at the residents' request as well, they have been pretty vocal about their request that having a higher transparency standard in our community. And then in January, we had three council members mention that they, even from Thursday to Monday, wasn't enough time to prepare to get all the information they needed for a meeting. And so in the same spirit, well, we couldn't possibly ask our council to vote on items that are just being brought to them at the meeting and not giving them any time to prepare beforehand. And so if we're asking, why are we going to such great detail? There was a very simple transparency ordinance in the original spirit that was brought forward. But again, at request of the council to, to dig in a little bit deeper and to make sure that their concerns were addressed and give everybody a little bit more peace of mind. We tried to spell everything out as detailed as possible, which is why we had that workshop prior to the last meeting.
In regards to the not having enough time to look at it, we already take care of that. We table it. If you don't have, if somebody, one of the council members says, you know what? I, in fact, I think this is the way it came about. We don't ever, I haven't had enough time to really review. And so we tabled it to the next meeting. Just because it's on the agenda doesn't mean you have to vote it up or down.
That hasn't always happened in the history of our council, unfortunately.
But it takes the whole council to vote. It has to be a majority vote to add it to an agenda. So I, it's not like one person can control anything.
But, but three can. And that's where the community concerns came in. And so for instance, if one council member were gone and I, as the mayor or any other mayor, wanted to put something in because I know that that council person would be against it, then I could have two people on the council lined up to vote to add something to the agenda and push it through that night. Now, if two people on the council said, no, we don't feel like we've been prepared for this item on the agenda, then they can still push it through. There's no recourse for that. There's no policy in place saying, if anyone on the council wants to table it, then it's tabled.
I would note, and I, I think our city attorney can address a little bit, as it relates to an ordinance, so if, if there was something added and it was an ordinance action, I believe that still requires a majority of the council elect. So even if there's two, if somebody's missing, it still takes three members of the council for an ordinance, not necessarily other action, but an ordinance.
Right. I think that the concern was more of just any, any action item. And so I don't know if, if we, since there's not necessarily enforceability, we're not bringing, you know, right tickets. And what, or do you want us to put just a different, a resolution number on it? Is that the solution?
Well, so two questions. The first is, we can figure out what vehicle it would be in, whether that's a policy, a res, some sort of resolution or protocol, I mean, put any title you want. But that's related to whether you want to spell it out at all. And so if the consensus is, yes, it would be, it would be good for not only the working relationship of the governing body, but also for, here's what we want to communicate to the public as far as what you can expect from us, as far as when you'll receive preliminary agendas and how, if it's going to be amended, how it would be amended. If that's something the governing body wants to do in a formal setting, not every one of the governing bodies that I advise goes into this level of depth. But I will say that many of them have at least a policy to, to lay out. Here's what we can expect of each other and the public can expect of us. So I don't think it's a, it's a conversation that is only reflective of past problems. I think that it's a, it's also a healthy conversation to have. And it may be something, and frankly, if, to use the legislature as an example, like every two years, they pass a new package of rules that will govern that by any of them. And so, you know, it's a, it's a constant conversation of what are we going to hold each other to for this session? And so I think that could be done upon reorganization, every two, four years. How, how it happens, just to re-articulate, these are the, this is what we expect. And so if, if it's not going to be necessarily adopted tonight, or I have a, a good sense of where, what that expectation is, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be a resolution. But if we can at least get to the point where staff knows what their expectations are from you tonight and then you have a general sense of what it's going to look like to amend an agenda. And then the question of executive sessions, I think, I think would be in a pretty good spot.
I would, I would just note that, and you know, as far as section one here and kind of what's been laid out, I, I don't see anything, maybe the time period a little bit, but process-wise, that part of it is pretty in keeping. Adding the council to E, and that's your, your decision, isn't that difficult? Because typically that agenda literally is kind of in our agenda format with the items just kind of laid out just broadly. Sometimes that language gets clarified, but it's, it's, this is pretty much a document like this is what gets sent out. So it's not the full packet. So whether we send it to the mayor and the council and the city attorney or whoever you want to, that, that, from a staff standpoint, is no additional work. I, I think the area would, we would probably have some concerns. And of course, Zach is the one that spends the greatest time as city clerk on this, is that item G. Typically, we try to get that out earlier than that. I know we don't always get there, but, but you know, a 2:00 PM timeframe versus four is probably more workable so that if there's a little bit of time in there before it goes out to the final council. But I mean, so I see a little bit on that timeframe, but broadly speaking, because it's, it's really that last 24 hours where we're really spending the greatest amount of time just making sure the agenda memos are complete and that all the attachments and documents that might go with that, that the ordinances that, you know, they may still be under review by the city attorney. And it, it's kind of that crunch time, that last 24 hours of everybody making sure the pieces are there. And, and again, Zach as clerk is kind of making sure everybody's got their stuff in. And sometimes because we don't have it in, that's the point where we say, we're going to take this off this agenda because we don't have the information that we need to give to you.
Yeah, that was going to be, sorry, not to interrupt, but that was going to be my comment, that by and large, this first section is, you know, outside of the kind of more rigid time limits and thresholds that are in there, is essentially what we, we do now. And just to provide a little bit more context on, you know, resolution versus ordinance or a policy, you know, or this is not too dissimilar from something like our record retention policy, which we adopted via resolution, which essentially just spells out, here's the standard, a lot of it's based on state statute. Or our financial policy, which spells out our purchasing thresholds. And when we bring stuff to the council and when bids are required, none of that's codified in the law, but it's kind of the accepted standard and guidepost that staff uses in conducting their, their regular business. And it, it was incorporated with input from the council, just not codified in the way that this original document has been. But that, yeah, just to echo the city manager's statements, outside of those kind of more, those goalposts being as rigid as they are regarding the timeframe of it, that first section is largely what we're doing already.
And so since it's in like more of a codified sense, what if we just took the times out and we just left the days? And so that way the community and the council would know what to plan for. So it would go for review on Wednesday and then Thursday and then published Friday and not had the rigid timelines. And that way people would kind of have, have an expectation, but it wouldn't be, there would be a lot more flexibility within that first step. I'm looking for stuff and put.
Yeah. Oh, I mean, I mean, again, I mean, again, our goal, and I use that word goal because it really is, right? Is, is to get that preliminary, I think we generally try to get that preliminary agenda to you by around noon time on Wednesday, thereabouts, or at least by five on Wednesday. I mean internally. And then try to have that turned around and have the packet out certainly by end of business day on Thursday. And then, I'm not sure what time you normally publish it Friday.
Usually, usually 3:30 at night after the hot.
So that, that's generally what we, what we try to use as our, as our process. Again, we've had times when maybe the financial reports weren't there and we said, we're going to go ahead and get to the packet out. Because quite honestly, the financial reports are kind of a, you know, kind of a separate item. But, or it may be it's an ordinance that is still in some form of a draft that, you know, we, we send it to you saying that there are some additions that may come and we can redline those for you. So broadly, that's what we're saying. So if, if we want to remove those, those, and I mean, I, you know, end of business day, which I mean, it's 5 o'clock for all intents and purposes, right?
Even if we just left it the day, I mean, the day just in case something goes late.
That's.
You know, that would be, I think that would be acceptable.
Yeah. If, if everyone is okay with that, then we'll just take out the no later than, and we'll just read, for example, on G, the mayor shall approve a finalized proposed agenda on the fourth day prior.
Correct.
Okay. So that, if that works for everyone and, and it's, you know, again, if it's policy, resolution ordinance, the idea is you can hold staff accountable for whatever you want to hold staff accountable, regardless of whether it's in policy or not. So, yeah. Okay. If that's good, I think I've got direction on that. Section two, this was based on our previous conversation two weeks ago. A regular meeting agenda shall not be adopted by the governing body except as provided in this section. The following protocol shall be followed by all members of the governing board and city staff regarding adoption of a meeting agenda at the beginning of any regular meeting. First, after calling the meeting to order and holding initial public comment, the mayor shall move or receive a motion for the adoption of the proposed agenda. Upon a duly seconded motion, the matter of the agenda shall be discussed. Next, a motion to adopt the originally proposed agenda may be approved by a majority of the city council members then present. A majority, I'm sorry, next, a motion to approve an originally proposed agenda may be part of, may be made part of the consent agenda. Next, after the proposed agenda is open for discussion upon a duly seconded motion, any member of the governing body, including the mayor, may move to amend the proposed agenda in any manner except as otherwise provided in this section. Except in matters involving emergency, all proposed amendments to a proposed agenda Except in matters involving emergency, all proposed amendments to a proposed agenda at the beginning of a regular meeting must have been previously submitted by the city manager in the development of the preliminary agenda prior to being added to an approved meeting agenda. Obviously, emergency is not defined here, so it's just giving an expectation that if, if something is going to be added at the meeting, if notice was possible from, from one of the members of the governing body, it should have been submitted to staff. Next, no motion to amend a proposed agenda shall pass unless approved by, and this is your, your decision point, obviously, majority, two-thirds, four-fifths, unanimous consent. Choices of the city council persons then present. My understanding from last session was that it would at least be more than a majority. But I, I just wanted to call attention that these are not the only options. I put in here four-fifths or unanimous consent, if you want the higher threshold at the beginning. And then finally, the board shall not commence business within a regular meeting until a meeting agenda is adopted by the city council, and I should say the governing body. Any thoughts on, what's the discussion on, on this protocol?
My, my idea is if it is that important to amend and add something to the agenda, it should be unanimous consent. That's just my thought.
Is there reason for the four or five, or the thought process for the four or five vote? Is it in case somebody's not here? No, it's just that, like, for example, you know, overriding a veto in some governing bodies, two-thirds, like higher thresholds for more extreme or rare circumstances. And so in this instance, four-fifths would require, I mean, we're almost there to unanimous. So if you don't want unanimous, and you don't want majority, you've got to pick somewhere in between. So that would either be two-thirds or four-fifths.
Yeah, it's, it's the difference between three out of five or four out of five.
Right.
It's the threshold.
And so the, it, it's approved by the, that ratio would be, or threshold would be of the persons present. If you've got a quorum, and you've commenced your meeting, then the four-fifths would apply to whoever's sitting in the seats. Not a seated elected.
The Roberts rules of order have a majority for this point in a meeting and a, what's the, what's the other term? That'd be more of a two-thirds vote, so it's a higher level, if you want to add later in the meeting, is how the standard process is. And I'm, I'm not in favor of C at all. I think it needs to be a separate item on the agenda. And.
I was going to ask a little clarification on C. Does that mean an item could be moved to the consent agenda?
Which section?
I'm sorry, section two, item C.
So I am, that's just approving the agenda as stated?
Well, it's lump, potential of lumping it into the consent agenda, which, as you know my feelings about consent agendas, I, I think that's where you can hide and disguise things. And so I would prefer it be separate by itself and handled separate, if it's that important. And then I don't understand E. Got a mental block on E. Two E.
And again, any of these can be struck.
Well, I don't understand it.
But the idea is basically, in order to ensure fair notice of what the, the range of possible agenda items might be, and that there may be a conflict coming up on Monday night as to whether something's going to be added, despite the mayor not including that on the agenda. That if, if it's something that is not an emergency, but is, you know, city council member feels very strongly that we need to discuss this at the next meeting, there's just an expectation that it would have been submitted, you know, to city staff as a proposed item then, so that the, the council could see this is coming down the pike. Versus Monday night, it's the first we heard about it, but it's not an emergency. So it's, it's more a, to take into account the comments about council preparedness, to be able to make a decision one way or the other, whether we should add this with a four-fifths or unanimous consent. That said, there's nothing, the council can continue to do whatever it wants as far as, is it an emergency? Is it for good cause shown? You know, there's all different types of reasons you might go, it, it wasn't necessarily something that was important on Wednesday, but it bubbled up and became very important over the weekend, and so we got to address it. So you could take it out completely, you could say, if, if possible, more of a, you know, how are we going to, a working relationship question, less of a thou shalt know. Does that make?
Well, I think you mentioned earlier, now we got to define emergency.
No, I, and, and.
And, and so, you know, it's just, it, as a legislator, and it, it's so, you're so prone to develop new rules to expand on the previous rules, and then new rules to clarify those rules, and then new rules, it, as a legislator, your first temptation is, let's make a rule on that. Well, that's not always effective governance. And so, like on something like involving emergency, well, my emergency is probably totally different than, than Garrett's emergency. And so, and so I, I think, and, and if a motion is made to add something to the agenda, and it's seconded, there, then there's discussion on whether it's of merit to even put on the agenda. And that's when the council could vote up or down on that.
And that's a good, that's actually a good point, as far as the development of the agenda versus discussion about whether it's important. There's not really, you can't discuss the context of a request until you get to the meeting. And so what may seem like, well, this doesn't really fit our next meeting, until you discuss it, any, any matter before the body, you haven't fully deliberated whether it's something that you should do. So I, I agree that the, you should err on the side of, of being able to talk to each other legally, and that's in an open meeting. So with that, I, I think that maybe the best way that would just be, do we have consensus one way or the other on whether it can be added to a consent agenda?
Yeah, I, I would like to just weigh in on that just a little bit, and that is, in doing some research and reading, LKN is very supportive of consent agendas. I don't feel like they're hiding anything at all, especially in, in the way we do it. And that is, every item is listed specifically, I'm looking. Every item is listed specifically that's on the consent agenda during public comments, which was moved up to the first part of the meeting. Any member of the public can ask for any item on the consent agenda to be pulled and, pulled and discussed separately. And then when it comes to council, just like we did tonight, any item on the consent agenda can be pulled and discussed separately from the consent agenda. And so that gives multiple options for any item to be pulled. But as our council meetings grow longer, and we have more, more needs that are coming before us, I know the standard is, and LKN really feel comfortable with the use of consent agendas as long as it's open for deliberation and anyone can pull an item to be discussed at further.
So, so the consent agenda, whether to use this consent agenda or not is a separate question from whether this should be included on it. And so that, that, the latter question is the only question.
If an item is added, so let's assume we have a process, we've done our agenda, we've sent it out, it's for all intents and purposes done and ready to go, and it's, and it's time for that vote. The question here is, if an item is added to the agenda, can it be added to the consent agenda?
I see. That's not at all how I read it. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I thought you meant approving the agenda could be added to the consent agenda. Like, because now, aren't you suggesting, because normally, like as it is now, we don't vote to approve the agenda. And so I thought we were adding approving the agenda to the consent agenda, but not if an item was added that meeting.
Yeah. It's only whether to approve the proposed agenda. If, if the mayor has, if you all decide, yes, it can be added to the consent agenda, it would just read, meeting minutes, you know, approve the, approve the proposed agenda. If someone looked, if the council person looked at that, said, nope, we got to take, take that off. That's, that's the question, is whether that extra step should have to be taken, or do you just want a separate agenda item? We were talking about milliseconds, or just a few seconds of time, but it may be very important to just memorialize, no, we are going to set an agenda that's separate from the consent agenda. The, the agenda would include the consent agenda, but until we adopt an agenda, the only thing we can do is say the pledge of allegiance.
Well, in this, in this paragraph E though, it says must have previously been sent to the city manager of development. So that strikes everything down from bringing something to the meeting. So what we're talking about is basically no void, because you have to send it to city manager first.
I mean, they're too, that, we're not quite there yet. Consent agenda, what, I guess the question is, not just, so we don't spend all night on it, like, do you want to be able to include the, the proposed agenda on the, you want to have to pull it off the consent agenda? Or do you just want to say, no, it, it doesn't go on the consent agenda?
You're talking about, I think maybe, so when we, when they were going to make a motion in a second to adopt the agenda, it could be part of the consent.
That's what C currently says.
Okay. Or you could have it as your first item of voting. So, so you've done your pledge, and then you adopt that.
We're bouncing around here.
I think that's where we're at. I miss, I wasn't quite sure I did that either, so.
So do we need a rule that the, anything added to the agenda can't be added to the consent agenda? Now, that seems reasonable to me, because then it could be, it would be considered separately.
I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't think we would be adding the consent agenda if we wanted something specifying that.
I think that it, it could get to a point of, you know, reduction to absurdity, and so.
Yeah, exactly.
Getting there now.
I, that's why I'm trying to isolate the question, which is, if it's easiest to understand for everybody, just leave it off consent agenda, make it its own agenda.
Absolutely. That's the way it should be done. You can't be, if you want to bring something in, you shouldn't be lumping it in with a bunch of other stuff. Because we all, I mean, somebody might not want to vote for this because they don't understand.
Section two items. Are we looking at the same thing?
Yes. I saw a lot of heads nodding. Okay. Next would be the E.
Hold on a minute. I want to ask, we've already rearranged the agenda to have requests from the public. Okay, bang, meetings called, order, pledge allegiance, moment of silence, any comments from the public? And then approve the agenda?
Yes.
And if we decide not to approve the agenda, what do we do?
Meeting adjourned.
Well, if you don't approve any agenda.
This to me is just so confusing. It was so simple before, and now we're going to throw all of this do's and don'ts and all this stuff. And I think it's just confusing things so bad. I don't understand where this transparency thing came from in the first place. I think we're pretty transparent. And I, as far as contacting city manager, I think, yes, okay, we need to let him know what we want to do. But there's going to be situations where things are going to need to be added, you know, within that four-day stretch. And I think that, I, I think that we're already doing this out of order, as far as I'm concerned. So maybe we should approve the consent agenda, or approve the agenda before anything even starts.
I, I would agree with that. I think that's something that we could do, because if an item's added to the agenda, then the public may want to comment on it, and that goes in line with our transparency. So Garrett, I, I agree, and I think we could do that, is.
You may want to add.
First item is.
Does that make sense?
It makes about as much sense as, you know, four pages of what you do to have a meeting. All you need is an agenda. This, this is the agenda for tonight. Yeah. The public see that, that's the agenda. We've spent 30 minutes on this, already, well, 45 minutes on this already.
I, I think what, the, the clarity here, and it's not something we've done, but probably something we should have done, right? I, I think you can read different things, is all you're doing is the very first step. If what I'm hearing is, you're going to have a motion, and somebody can make a motion in a second to adopt the agenda.
Cool.
Right? And you can have discussion, and during that discussion, the question would come, are there any other items to add to that agenda? And if there's none, you're going to have a motion in a second, and you're going to adopt it and move on down the agenda. If there's something to be added during that discussion, I think the question that's being asked is, what, what is the number of present council members that have foremened to add an item to the agenda? That's, that's fundamentally, I think, the long and short of it, I think. You know, Mr. Day's, tried to take a whole lot of different information and put it on pieces of paper over the last couple of meetings. More power to him.
So how many pages, how many pages would that take off of this ordinance resolution thing that we're discussing right now?
Well, how could, can I ask a question? I don't know, I've sat here for many years. So if that was the process, and somebody came up here and said, I'd like to add this to the agenda.
Right.
How much do they talk about it? How, how is it?
The council, or?
Right, a member of the council say, I'd like to add. How much can be talked about? What if it's not voted into the agenda that night? I mean, I'm, I'm just confused.
That's the point, that's the point of moving the agenda. And, and this is not, this is not new. This is parliamentary procedure. You have to have, once you formally convene the meeting, under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, so there is a level of formality that you have to observe to say, this is the meeting and this is not the meeting. Once you call the meeting to order, you have to be able to conduct your business in an efficient way. And even though this discussion seems very inefficient tonight, it, it is the rule by which you will continue to operate and build trust with one another, with the public. And so we've made it through what your expectations are. Now the question is, what are your expectations of each other? And the idea of moving an agenda at the beginning of a meeting and then amending that agenda is, just provides guidance for that meeting.
Okay.
Because there, it takes a piece of paper to a, to a formal plan that everyone says, yes, we're doing. And so the, we can get rid of the E.
Hang, hang on just a second, because we're, actually, we're still not to E yet.
Yeah.
Is, so if somebody wants to add, make sure I understand this. Let's say, it's, the motion is made to approve the agenda, it's seconded, open for discussion, there are any other items that need to be added to the agenda. And I say, yes, I'm, I'm concerned about X, Y, Z, I make a motion, it's done in a formal motion. And then it, it's, it's seconded, it dies if there's no second. And, and then if there's a vote, it, and it's a negative vote, it dies. So there's two chances to, to not add it to the agenda. And then if it's added to the agenda, I, I hate to do this, but when you make rules, you got to make sure, make thorough rules. Can you, can that motion specifically say what point in the agenda it will be discussed?
Yes.
In between item five and six, or, so that's another. Or is there at the end of it that says, oh, added motions, you know, discussed here?
No, I think that the, the motion can be as specific as it wants to be. Just like the proposed agenda could be 80 pages long, and everyone's like, we're not doing it.
Can I ask, can I ask a question just right off of that? So you were sitting here saying, I want to, I propose we add X, Y, Z, so. I sit here, I propose we add agenda item, my next. My next door neighbor's complaining about their neighbor's grass growing too high. Can we add that to the agenda? That's probably not a great example. If I give something so minute, but how can any of you agree to that if you don't know much about it? That's my point, I'm trying to have, I, I don't understand.
Well, we're not agreeing to the item, we're agreeing to discuss it later in the meeting. And so that's what the discussion.
Emergency item.
Right.
Well, that's.
I think to elaborate on that, it's just that now, when we've done that at the beginning of the meeting, yeah, we're, we're voting, making a motion in a second to do it at the meeting and that might be somewhat clear to us. It completely cuts the residents out. It gives them absolutely no opportunity to communicate with the governing body, their wishes to that item or to, um, come and give public comments. And that's what a lot of this was, the, the spirit in which this was originated was, um, if, if we're bringing something tonight, if I come in and I say, hey, guys, I wanna add this to the agenda, um, especially if I'm using it in a nefarious way where I'm, I'm trying to, you know, time it, time it where people are here, people are gone, you know, waiting to the last minute. Um, what I, what I would like to do is have it on the agenda so it's published to the public and they can see it. That should always be what we strive for is an agenda that the public knows what to expect when they come, what's gonna be discussed. But if I add items at the meeting, then we cut that public transparency out completely.
So just to get back to the, the procedure of it all, you can't amend something until it's been put on the table for discussion. You, you have to have a proposal, a motion, that's the move, to move a general agenda. That general agenda, then, once it's open for discussion, can be amended, there can be an amended motion. And that's what an amendment to add or to take off, you could modify. You can say, I'm gonna strike everything on the agenda except the pledge of allegiance and the adjourn.
Mm-hmm.
Because, uh, and so all that can happen in an amended motion, but that's why you would, you'd throw out the original proposal first and then you would discuss it. And then to your, your point, uh, Councilwoman Shriver, the, um, discussion of whether to add something or the discussion of whether to adopt the proposed agenda can take, you can be as specific as you want. If the council wants to debate it for six hours, you know, they, they can. There's nothing prohibiting deliberation. That said, it's probably not gonna happen, it probably wouldn't be wise. You need to move on to governing. Adopt your agenda. If you need to add something, do an amended motion if there's consensus. If you've said as a body generally, we want there to be unanimous, four fifths, two thirds, majority consent. At that point, this is what we expect of each other and then you move on.
I, I might just, I, I, so it sounds like the first item we need going forward on agendas, right? Is to have an item called meeting to order, right? That kind of officially kicks off the meeting.
That's the, yeah, hey.
Right, so we, we call the meeting to order, we'll put that on the agenda. And the second item, and I just wrote this down, it, maybe you could have, consider adoption of the agenda. Right? And it's during that, that if there was an addition or deletion to the agenda, that could be part of that discussion.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's how it works right now.
And then if you want to have a motion to add something to the agenda, then whatever that vote is, and once you've completed it, then you finalize your vote on adopting that agenda. So you may consider adoption of the agenda as presented, right? That's, that's the most likely option, what we typically do. You, you could during those, consider adoption of agenda. And then you, you know, and then you get to the, a motion or a vote that says, amend the, you know, adopt the agenda as amended with item four C or whatever. And, and then you're voting on an agenda as amended. The only question, I should say, but the big question is, what is the vote to require adoption of an amended agenda? I'm assuming a regular agenda is a simple majority vote.
Right.
Right? Simple majority. It's, the question I think is being asked, the fundamental is.
Well, that's how.
How, yeah, how many votes, how many votes do you feel is necessary to?
You can all do it all.
Add something.
You can, I mean, once you guys get good at this, I mean, you can say, I would move the agenda with the, with an amendment to add this.
Yeah.
And then if it's seconded, then you can discuss it. And then if it's consensus, all five, five vote or six vote, then it's amended and you just move on.
Mm-hmm.
And so it, it can be very quick. It doesn't have to be as complicated as it sounds. That said, um, that's how the amendment would work. I, if we can move to E really quick, I'm happy striking E if the idea is.
He seems to unwind everything we've done to this point.
Yes, I'm, I get, if we come in and amend the agenda to put something on the agenda that nobody else on the council has seen, we're not, we're defeating the purpose of transparency. The easiest way to fix this is, you can't amend anything unless it's an emergency. Because a town our size, there's nothing that we have to deal with tonight that can't be dealt with in two weeks, unless it's an emergency, you know, street capes in or, you know, God forbid something happens.
Flood.
Yeah, something.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, because if you amend the agenda and we don't, haven't seen it until that night, we're actually defeating the purpose of transparency. So, I mean, we don't need these four pages.
Well, I understand, but that to me, like, I'm trying to take that comment and that actually is in favor. Because that's the whole point of.
Well, I mean, I just, it just seems, you're still bringing something to the meeting and I've never seen it.
Yeah.
And so I think, and I think that, um.
The easiest way to fix it.
That what we had talked about last time is, right now, if someone can add something to the agenda, none of us know about it beforehand, the community doesn't know about it beforehand. And so, uh, after hearing comments from the community, we were saying, I think, most of us, the consensus was, we should have the highest threshold for amending the agenda at the meeting. And so if it's an emergency, if the building's flooding, if something's crazy going on, then we're gonna be on the same page for amending that. But it shouldn't, um, shouldn't really be used for, uh, just throwing something on the agenda, just surprise everybody and catch people up.
And I, and I think that's, you know, to, to Councilmember Bishop's point, the mechanism to control that and ensure the transparency is the voting threshold that, that we're talking about. So if we feel like it needs to have a higher threshold than a simple majority to add anything to the agenda, then I think that that would, that's the transparency mechanism that, that you, that the council has. That if a council member feels an item is time sensitive and time sensitivity constitutes an emergency and introduces it, it's kinda on that council person to make that case in the, making the motion and then the voting happens. And then if the voting, if it's voted down, then that's the action of the council, either accepting, yes, this is met, you have convinced us this has met our threshold or voting it down because it's, you know, it, they just failed to capture the, whatever the threshold is that, to meet the threshold of emergency.
That's what Councilmember Shriver had mentioned earlier, like, for that specific scenario where we're adding something the night of the meeting, where we're not publishing it to the community or giving council members background information, that was the one she suggested, um, using the unanimous vote for that.
Because, because, Mark, I, Councilmember Bishop, I do believe there could be a chance that it could happen. So I'd hate to.
And it also kind of eliminates that, that emergency verbiage because that is a little fuzzy in, in how it's applied. And it does, I mean, how, whatever the threshold that the council wants to use, that's the prerogative of the body. But it at least opens up the possibility that if something is time sensitive in nature or something has emerged within the last couple of hours but might not be a, you know, a, a life or death quote unquote emergency, you have that, that tool in your toolbox to have the ability to consider it or not consider it. Or a council member introduce it for consideration.
I agree, the threshold takes care of the, of, if you're gonna have a threshold, it makes E a little redundant. If you're not gonna have a threshold, it's more best standard.
Define threshold again?
Uh, four fifths, unanimous, two thirds.
Five council members or the entire governing body?
Uh, just council. Proposed by the.
Okay.
It's, it's similar to.
I would think, I would think it'd be, have to be unanimous for all of us to agree.
I agree.
And we're apt to define emergency. Because what a firefighter defines as an emergency is different than what I define as.
And that would be our discussion.
No, I, I'm, I'm suggesting that you take out E completely. Emergency would not show up in, in the policy.
So the.
Because it's a higher threshold, it wouldn't necessarily have to be an emergency, it could just be very, very.
Eliminated start.
So you've got to choose the M2E and the specific times.
Yes. Do we have consensus on unanimous, at least two stated, but I didn't, I haven't seen. How do you want me to handle the green versus?
I feel like that's what the residents were really requesting, was have the highest threshold for adding something to that.
I'm, but what about the representatives?
Hey, I get concerned when we go all or nothing and, and we, and but the, the thought that all five of us will agree on any one item is pretty darn slim. And so to, for unanimous approval.
I think we do that a lot.
Yeah.
We vote on stuff all together.
Keep in mind, in a worst case scenario, when there's, when there's a, a mayor that's not, that's really has her own agenda, his or her own agenda, is gonna shove it down everybody's throat or not, and the city manager, and we've had this experience in the past, guys. It was not that long ago when we had people that did some things to this city that were really negative from a city manager and a mayor standpoint because they could hide behind things and do things. I, I, I am very concerned about the council, each member of the council not having a voice.
I think, and I think that's where a little bit of the checks and balances come in because the city manager and I can't vote on this. And so it's, it's not a governing body vote, it's a council vote. And so I think that, and I could be wrong, but what Councilman Bishop and Councilman Shriver were expressing was, if it's, and if it's not an emergency, it can likely wait to the next meeting to give transparency to our residents in time for our council members to prepare. But if it's really an urgent situation, then generally we're gonna have agreement among the council members. Um, and, and that removes the city manager from a, a vote on that since we're the ones, um, finalizing the.
I, I would just note, I think, two items here on that. So as you think about two thirds and four fifths, understand that because of the size of our council, that's, assuming everybody's here, right? It's the same. It means four of the five.
So. No, not as drafted. It's of the city council.
What, you, you, no, I get that. I said if they're all here, if all five people are here, I, I agree, you're, you're right. If it's less, then that's different. But I mean, if all five of you are, you know, all six of you are here and you, and you say two thirds or three fourths of the city council, youth members elect, right? That's the same number because one's three point something, something, the other one's about three eight point five or something. You always round, gotta roll, round to the whole number, which means you gotta roll up. So what you're really talking about fundamentally is the difference between four affirmative votes or five affirmative votes. That's, that's the fundamentals there. I, I would also add, and I know we're gonna talk about it a little bit, I personally would, sorry, strike out the stuff in section six because section six, you already have, that's the special meeting standard. We have in our ordinance and by statute, the power of a special meeting. So assume that this emergency or whatever this event occurs somewhere between your regular council meetings, you very well could call a, a, an emergency, a, a special meeting. And that already has its own rules around it.
Right.
Effectively, it takes three council members to call that meeting. That's already established, vote by statute and in our, in our code of ordinance. So you always have that as a secondary place. Again, I think, you, you know, we have seldom used that provision. I think it should not be a regularly used provision, uh, just as we have not utilized a, a amending, we haven't amended the agenda. I'm gonna say I probably have two hand, you know, my two hands over the time. So I think broadly speaking, the council has been very good in not amending agendas, modifying agendas, calling special meetings, having lots of executive session. I mean, I think all those things that we, we, we could abuse, I mean, all of those could be abused, but it, it generally has not been what's happened, uh, but.
So, uh, really quick, I'm back on F then. Um, the, if it's unanimous or four fifths, if it's four fifths and there's only four council persons here, it would require all four, just how the math works. Um, if you go to two thirds, um, you could have, uh, three of four, if there are four here, if there are three here, you know, two of three. So, um, is there a counter proposal to the U unanimous?
I think we had ju, three council members that were for the unanimous. Did you guys have a different?
I'm, I'm for the two thirds of the four fifths.
I think unanimous just looks too much like a rubber stamp. And I think that the council member that wants to add something to the agenda during the consent or the amends, amending the agenda would have the opportunity to plead their case on that with the council. And I think it would be better to plead your case to the three or the four versus unanimous. That's just the way I feel, so I could go that way. I don't like, I don't like the word unanimous. Looks kinda like I said, I didn't like the word deadline at the last meeting.
So just to, to verify, so on the four fifths vote, assuming you don't, at the start, that if all five of you are here, it requires four to five. If four of you are here, it requires four of four.
Right.
Right? And then if there was only three, which would be the minimum in order to have, uh.
It's three of three.
A, a meeting. And then that requires. Right, if you do four, four fifths requirement, if there's less than a majority, it's unanimous, unanimous. If you do two thirds, then you'd require three, three of the four that are here or if there are only three that are here, it'd be two of three. So in some ways, two thirds or unanimous makes a little bit more sense, um, as far as mathematically.
I think morally and ethically, if there was only three members here, somebody should, would be pretty bold to ask for something to be put on the agenda without the other two here.
I agree.
Transparency went away completely on that one, so.
And that, and frankly, that comment is an example of the type of soft expectations you have of each other that it may not be written down, but, you know, if we're passing stuff with just three people here, you know, we're losing public trust. So what, what do you want me to do?
Just I'll add to that a little bit more. You know, we've got all these, you talk about in trying to, you know, develop these kinda checks for yourselves and the expectation yourselves. Really, the, the mechanism to hold the, the council accountable is, is voting. So if there is, you know, a history of impropriety on the council or manipulation of the agenda for certain ends, you know, that's the mechanism that corrects that, that a democracy is, is voting and people paying attention, paying attention to that and at making that, you know, making those choices at the ballot.
Well stated.
Excellent point.
But for the four years we're here, we need some sort of policy to go by.
Yeah.
Um, and so we've got three that are unanimous, two that are, um, stuck under that, uh, with the two thirds of four fifths. Do we want to keep moving forward or do we need to?
That, I would prefer to have that resolved.
Wait a minute, I just.
I mean, it's basically the same.
It's the same thing.
Yeah. It's just, it's just the wording, correct?
It's not the same as unanimous.
No, unanimous require that everybody that's present votes.
If they're all five are here, all five have to vote. If four are here, all four have to vote on the, on the four fifths.
So four fifths would actually be a compromise between the two because it would be unanimous unless you got all five here and then you could have one that doesn't vote for it. So I don't know if you can come to a consensus.
I, I reserve the right to dissent.
Are you good with the four fifths? We're good with four fifths.
All right, we're good. All right, E is gone.
F is gone.
Additions, uh, at the end of the meeting, biggest question is, does that go down to two thirds or majority? To basically force something on, because then you've got, you know, you've got two weeks to prepare.
Where, what section are we on?
Section four is what it's called, but it should be three, it's right below where we just were.
Oh, right. What paragraph?
So this is the whole question of, okay, you get through the whole meeting. I want to make sure this shows up on the next meet, next proposed agenda, the mayor doesn't have discretion if it gets voted in. Basically, if you lose the vote at the beginning of the meeting, can I then come back and say, we're forcing this on next time?
For subsequent me.
For subsequent.
Okay, so that, that requires a definition of subsequent. Is that the next meeting or a future meeting? So there's a definition that needs to be made there and.
Be, uh, in the motion.
Okay. Because what if it's something you wanted, but you're not going to be at the next meeting? So that leaves it to where the discretion of the person making the motion, what meeting?
And the, the benefit of it is, um, so the mayor, the kind of the check and balance here is, is the mayor finalizes the agenda. But in general, the council votes on the items on the agenda. But if you're, if a member of the council sends something to Mike and I go, Mike, we're not, we're not going to do that at this meeting. This gives the council members a mechanism to, to put it on an agenda, but it doesn't put it on that night's agenda. So that we give our council members time to prepare in the community, um, the knowledge upfront of what we'll be discussing at the following meeting.
And I think it's defined by the choice of the, uh, article A versus D, so A subsequent meeting, uh, meeting agenda. So the motion can be in ten, four weeks.
And I would make, I would like the lowest threshold possible.
So that would be majority.
Yeah.
And I would, I would just ask the council to consider, um, just taking into consideration that, um, the mayor does have. Should have some leadership discretion in putting an agenda together. And so I would ask that you'd consider a two thirds on that, um, just in giving the mayor ability to have some leadership role in the council. And, um, on the setting of the agenda as they cannot vote on almost anything in the agenda. So to kind of keep that, um, some sort of a, a leadership role there, I think two thirds would be.
Two thirds would be three if all five are here.
Four.
Or four, if all five.
That's the problem with two thirds.
Yeah.
Two thirds of four fifths.
Majority, majority would be three, right? Or, yeah, I, I would prefer majority because, so that, so that there is some voice for the council members.
You, I, I will throw this out there, if, if you don't want to use this two third, one majority, whatever. And correctly, if I remember, but you can say it requires three affirmative votes, right? So it doesn't matter how many's here, it takes three. So if only four is here, it still takes three, if there's three here, it still takes three. That's, I think, an option. That's a, it's, you can't do it with less than three. Most of the time, that's going to be a simple majority, but if you have somebody, if you have one less or two less, it, it doesn't reduce the number. Because again, a simple, if you had three here, as an example, and somebody brought that up and you did simple majority, it would just take two. Two affirmative votes. If you say it takes three affirmative votes, then in that case, it would be unanimous. If there is four here, it effectively makes it a two third, four fifths. And if everybody's here, it's, it's maybe it takes three votes, nothing less.
What he said.
Just an option.
That's, that works for me.
I'm good with that.
I can't remember a council meeting we had three members at, but.
I, I can't either, but so. It's. We gave you back to three or four, but.
It's going to get motion to get tabled anyway.
Yeah, and I think the purpose of this, and this was something I, I think I had raised was, you know. Items you, you, out of the meeting, because sometimes it's, it's not something in a meeting, again, we'll use the fireworks thing, right? So a citizen comes up and says, hey, I've got this thing, da, 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 da. And somebody on the council feels that it should be heard by the council, right? It take, it's the opportunity for that council member, and I'm going to say most of the time, we've all been kind of consensus anyway. But he just says, hey, Mr. City Manager, uh, Ms. Mayor, we would like this on the next agenda so that we can move this forward. I mean, the fireworks thing wasn't super critical, but it was a little critical timing because, right, they're wanting to get their permits. I, that's the, generally what I've seen the purpose of this is, is if there's something out there, and generally it, it rises out of the meeting. May, maybe we've had a discussion and, you know, you got a report from the staff about animal control. And somebody says, I'd really like more information on that, I'd like a full report or, I, whatever it may be. If, if that's the purpose of this, it, and it gives everybody the opportunity then, now you have a full two weeks.
Right, I think that three affirmative votes would be similar to four fifths in that it splits the baby wherein you'd need. It's a higher fraction if there's less than five. But it's, um, but it's not, uh, locking in. Two thirds of three, which would be a total of two votes, if you've just got three. You'd need unanimous if you've just got three.
It worked.
Okay.
Yep.
This make you feel better, it took two years to ratify the, the US constitutions.
You were there, weren't you?
Whoa.
And that was after the amendments. After, uh, last question is whether on executive session, currently you can, you can go into executive session under the law of state of Kansas by a majority vote. For any reason, under the coma, uh, expect, exceptions. There had been some discussion regarding what you want to limit that to. We can go into executive session for attorney client or non-elected personnel, uh, at, at any point, because those are usually the, the more emergency. Oh, we didn't foresee this, I need to tell you something that I can't say in open session, that I would, you know, ethically want to be able to convey to you confidentially first. And then you guys can debate it all you want, if you want to break that seal of confidentiality. So that would be the first one that I think you should reserve the ability to confer with your council. Second is the whether to do matters involving non-elected personnel, especially if there's an issue of, uh, that, that has to, especially if. You know, higher fire authority, disciplinary issues that could lead to potential litigation, all that stuff. And whether those should be subject, continue to be subject to a lower threshold, which is majority. And whether all other justifications should be a higher threshold. If you do nothing on this, again, it would be majority for everything.
I would, I'd like to strike the whole section, it's already stated in law. It's, it's, why, why do we have to reinvent the wheel on this? Because there's only certain reasons you can go into executive session anyway. And as far as transparency, executive sessions, uh, sessions are not transparent by definition. And so it's irrelevant in a transparency discussion.
I think the reason that we included it in that is, um, one of the council members, uh, when we were discussing the transparency ordinance originally, he said, well, what about executive session? Can we add an executive session, um, to an established agenda? And so I, and I could be wrong, Mr. and I, you can clarify that, but I, I feel like that's why, um, it was included just to, when we're talking about adding stuff to an agenda. But it seems that Kansas law art would already allow that adding of any executive session without considering it as adding to an agenda, is that correct? Or does it need to be stated in this?
Yes, because the. I mean, if you guys vote to do it and you enter executive session, again, no one's going to be enforcing this except yourselves. As far as your expectations of one another. And if you feel like you need to enter into executive session, transparency is one policy, is, is the policy, general policy of coma. And that's generally what state law expects of you is to have your deliberations in public. But you also have to govern and some of those things, it would be. It would expose the corporate body that is the city of Edwardsville to potential liability to say something in open session. And so you, in man, in balancing transparency with the best interest of the city, the city, you just will need to enter executive session sometimes. Can it be abused? Yes, of course. Has it been abused? That's for you guys to, to decide and for the, the public to hold you accountable to. But ultimately, I think it needs to be a tool in your box. The question is whether you expect each other to, um, have a, a higher consensus than state law would.
What's state law?
Majority.
Majority. I, I would like it if it said it is the policy of the governing body to conduct, uh, executive sessions as stated in, da, 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 whatever the law is.
As in only, only as, only as stated in the law?
Yes.
Yeah, just as a policy.
So then there's not, all, the all other justifications isn't even really necessary for only using it as stated in the law.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, it could be a whereas clause in that instance. I'm just saying to the public, look, we get it, we're not going to abuse this. If you think we're abusing it, tell us. But at the end of the day, it's, it's every governing body at some point needs to confer confidential, confidential, confidentially. And state law allows it for good reason.
I think that might be if we're, if we're taking it out, it might be a good whereas, um, because I know that council consensus, um, at the last meeting was. That executive session should be limited, limited to when it's necessary. Um, and even in the last, like between then and now, I've had calls from constituents and, um, one lady said, she was like, Carolyn, I know that there's a reason. For executive session and you have to do it sometime, but it sure looks bad. And from the resident's perspective, we're, we're talking, saying, what are they talking about back there? Why can't they talk about it in front of us? What are they, they're supposed to represent us, what are they doing? And so just with that sense, I, I agree with Councilman Adams that it should be very limited to the, the state.
It's allowed by law.
This, what is allowed by law in the state, but maybe a whereas that we're not going to use that unless it's really necessary.
So a colloquial way of putting it would be executive sessions should be short, legal and rare.
Yes, that's perfect.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I can change that to whereas, uh, just to say we're conducted for the limited purposes provided in coma. Strike section six, because we are, you already have that ability and.
So we're striking all section six?
Is that, if that's the consensus.
Fantastic, yeah, perfect.
Is section six executive session or?
Yeah, I'm sorry, special meeting.
Special meeting. We already have that.
And frankly, that was left over from the original, uh, transparency because special meetings took on a greater importance under that, uh, framework. But here we've spelled out what the expectations are, I don't think.
So, um, would be five now, but what's six?
Correct. So just to recap, and then I'll be done, we've got section one preliminary meeting agenda. We're going to send to the city council and the mayor, staff is going to send to the city council and the mayor of that preliminary agenda. We're getting rid of all time, uh, times on those days, just generally within the day. This is going to be, do you want to continue with the ordinance, do you want to change it to a policy?
I'd prefer a policy.
Policies now.
What's for the?
Portraits are different. I, I think a policy is ninety-nine percent of how this is going to help you is the discussion you just had. What's our expectation for each other? We put it on paper, yes, but no one's getting prosecuted if you, if, you know, so I would suggest a policy. And you can change it in the future.
Because if it's an ordinance, can I say, chief, arrest him?
I think we can fully.
We opposite discretion.
All right, section two, um, are we putting this before public comment? That was one question I had.
I think that we should.
Yeah, it should be.
Because that's part of the agenda.
Because I think we'd get amended.
Okay, took out, uh, after that portion, we got rid of C, it's not going to be part of the consent agenda. E, uh, is duplicative or at least not necessary if you've got a higher threshold, so that's being taken out. Four fifths, um, of city council persons then present, which functions like if you've got four, you need four. Section four is going to become section three because of the numbering mess up on my part. Number C of, uh, of that, or sec, section, subsection C of that section, you're going to three affirmative votes. Section five is getting taken out and I will put a general whereas statement regarding executive sessions, um, as well. And then we will take out section six and leave section seven and eight, no, set, uh, no, we will get rid of section seven and eight because it's going to be a policy, not an ordinance. Good?
Have you been good?
Yes.
Have you been down here again?
And we will, I, I better, we will, that will be back on your next agenda as an action item. We will adopt the policy.
But you could amend it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number four, consider authorizing the city manager to acquire necessary IT equipment.
Mister, Mister Chief slash IT Director will provide you an overview of this item.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, uh, you heard from me about exactly one month ago for an unbudgeted item, spending money. I'm trying not to make that a habit, but, uh, once again, we are pressed with some, uh, emergent circumstances. We're, we're doing a little better than some of the numbers presented here, but let's start from the beginning. It was approximately eight years ago, we had a server meltdown. And since that time, we have a new infrastructure, including server, uh, that lasted till recently. And recently, uh, it took six hours to recover the server. And the server is very important to the city operation because it's, if we don't have that, as we did in the past, you know, it was fourteen days previous that it was down. Uh, before we replaced it, we couldn't bank, no internet, there was really, uh, limited things that we could do. So, uh, this is very important. We've put in an extensive amount of research, what's failing, it's, you know, it, it runs twenty-four, seven. And built into what our current system is, are spinning discs, they're not SATA stuff, they're, they're, these things move. And that's what's failing, they're deteriorating and, uh, for, for what we paid then, we've got every bit of the lifespan. They recommended replacing it three years ago, but we knew we were in good order. But now we're faced with a critical phase, we're in a critical state with that particular product. Now, uh, through a number of, uh, kind of positions that we took from the city, we do have an IT vendor that helps assist in a number of things, and that's NetStandard. They've been a great partner, Y dot county company, uh, for all of our years, quite frankly, except for just a few early years. We had them spec all of the items that we needed and, but we have the buying power. So through my office, we purchased through the state and local, through Dell. Most, everything that we have is a Dell product, uh, we get exceptional prices, it would literally be double, uh, for these new products. Had we not had this kind of tax exemption, number one, and the state and local price. So where we are at today is that we need to replace our server system, the entire structure. We are, we do not have any redundancy, that's a big, that's a big problem, and we've known that. Uh, it's just about affordability and, you know, we do, we're faced with an emergent situation, but technology has come so far. That this is number one, affordable to us, though this is still a big number, uh, but it will do so much more moving forward. What we're asking for, the product that we had spec and designed, that infrastructure, that architecture will last. So for example, we've talked about a new building, this will be able to move and still function there for quite some time. It's, it's, uh, somewhat movable, it's certainly upgradable, you can add components to it, tho- those sorts of things. So it starts with this platform and then you just build from it. Uh, it's, it's somewhat of an entry line, but it's well aligned with the services the city provides and, and, and our IT needs, if that makes sense. We're, uh, we're not buying the Cadillac, but we're, we're, we're getting the economy, but we're not buying low end. This is good quality stuff, this design with NetStandard, uh, the way they've designed it, it builds redundancy. So when one product is down, the other one works and you don't even know they made a move, okay? And that's a problem that we've had over the years, is we have a one tower system, one CPU system, it's one tower. And when that goes down, the whole entire city's shut down, that, from the city organization. From the city organization perspective, there's just really nothing we can do. Therefore, maintenance sometimes, uh, you know, was, was delayed, that sort of thing. We had to wait for weekends. When you do those kinds of things, you pay three times the price, uh, for, for those kind of maintenance works and things. So the background is we're going to, we have, we're moving from the single environment to a redundant environment. In other words, we will have two brains, if you will, and one body of guts, if you will. So where these guts are, is where all the disk drives and all that is. And then the brains, there's two blades, if you will, and they talk to this box, this, this guts. And when one is out of whapp or needs maintenance, it shuts down and the other one is redundant, right? It's continuity of service. It's built that way. And so that's what we were impressed with and, uh, the Net Standard, as I mentioned, who's been our partner for quite a long time. Uh, they, they deploy this on a pretty standard level with other municipalities in, in, that they are, have as customers. And, uh, Miami County was one of the latest ones where they, they installed this as well. So what we're asking for, I, I waited, again, this was, talk about emergent on the agenda. We had to quickly put this together on Thursday and I was almost anticipating it would have to be put together today because I was waiting on some numbers. We know with the physicals, the hardware and, and that sort of thing from Dell, we know those prices, they got us quick. But this morning we, we, uh, received the rest of the quotes from Net Standard. This is about standing up the network, okay? Making it run, putting it all together, designing how it should be plugged in, that sort of thing. Uh, we got those numbers today, so we will be all in with labor and licensing. So remember I said we have these two brains, if you will? Each one has to have Microsoft licensing separately, so it doubles the cost. But we're all in right now, ninety-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So when Thursday, we were, I was saying not to exceed this ninety-five, I knew it was going to be somewhere in that ninety to about that ninety-four thousand. We were able to get price cuts even on Thursday from Dell. Said, we're, we're committing to having this before our governing body for approval. And, uh, they, they said, okay, we can find some more state and local discounts. So we're getting a very good pricing. The servers themselves, so if you think of these two blades I talked about, they're running about nine thousand dollars apiece. That's usually double. Net Standard could not touch that and that's what they do all day long is buy and sell that stuff, so.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we authorize, uh, the expenditure of up to ninety-five thousand dollars for the server hot, hardware setup labor and required licensing.
Second.
Do the motion in a second. Will the clerk please call up?
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Moat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
She made a compelling argument. All right.
I was going to say, it's got, it's like getting two cheese for the price of one. I'm not sure if that's a good deal or not.
Mike, did you have anything first?
I, I, I'm going to add a few things. Uh, you, you've got the, the overall administration report, but, uh, I heard from y'all and so I, I have a couple of items I'll add to that. So, uh, there was, there's been questions just about status. Highland Ridge, which is the, uh, town home project, uh, spoken to, uh, Dustin, who's the developer of that. So plat, all the documents are complete, all the plans are complete. Uh, he selected his contractor. He is waiting on a design, BPU water design. I mean, they gave him a price and he kind of questioned it, uh, which, uh, they, they tend to be a little high. But he had some design questions to see if there was some pricing changes there. And of course, uh, he should hear on the MIH, uh, notice this month. Obviously, getting that will be very helpful, but he will move, he plans to move forward regardless, right? So he's got his contractor, he owns the land. So, uh, I would expect that he could be turning dirt within thirty days or so. So, uh, that's still on, on the go. The other development we've heard a fair amount about is Groves, which is up on Ninety-Eighth Street. Again, uh, their plat is complete. It's been filed with the county. They have sold, there was a lot that had an existing house on it. If you've driven by, you might've seen there's some construction. So the first lot on the far north end, so, uh, they have an individual that they've worked with who's refurbishing that house, which was the intent. So to keep that there, so they're upgrading, refurbishing, and then will, I assume, sell it, uh, upon completion of that. They have also had their contractors selected and they anticipate, uh, moving dirt for the roads and the clearing that they have to do. Obviously, this, that individual lots don't really require pad site development. Those will occur as the building permits happen. And so that project too will be moving forward. Quiet Zone, I'm Mr. Moat, I'll, I'll beat you to your comments this evening. Olson, who's the engineer that was selected by the county, completed their inspections. They've noted that there are repairs that are needed before it can go to the railroad. I don't know what those are. I don't have a detail of that. Contractor been contacted and they're awaiting his response on them getting there to do those. Again, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm going to assume they're relatively simple. They may be things like signage or striping or those. I don't, I mean, curbs and pavement and all those things seem to be in place, so I'm not sure exactly what they are. But that, uh, keep, uh, keep on that one. And then the last one, uh, the town center contract with Fogel Anderson, uh, that is finalized. We will, they were just small things. Those AIA documents, for those that have ever worked with them, they're, they're kind of complicated because one leads to the next one, to the next one. So just getting all those things, uh, we had kind of two big areas where we typically, uh, question, and that is around some of the insurance and subrogation issues, which they've removed. And we typically strike through issues that, that require binding arbitration. I mean, it may be, maybe a method we want to use, but basically the language has been changed that if the parties agree that that's the mechanism they want to use versus litigation. Hopefully, we never get to that, but, uh, just something that generally we have stricken out. So we will hopefully be issuing, so the best, first step in that is the RFQ for architecture services. Part of the plan, uh, so we hope to have that out the first week of April. And then there'll be a process, but it'll come back to the city council. Right now, we've, we've targeted May twenty-second. It could be earlier, it could be the May eighth, but just to ensure time. And then we hope to have all of the preparation work, everything done to kind of say, this is what it's going to cost to build, uh, by the end of August. So that's the plans or the RFQ that we sent out and, and review them and go from there. So those are my additional comments. Uh, I will be, as I think I noted, out of the office here, uh, for, uh, the rest of, basically the latter part of this week and the first part of the following week. So, uh, but I'm sure we have trusty people here that'll make sure things keep running as they always do. As always, I'm available via the, the, the umbilical cord that we all carry with us.
So back on the twentieth?
Uh, get back on the twenty-second. Twenty-second, yes, late that, well, the flight changed, so now I'm not quite sure. But I'll probably be out of office those next two days, but I'll be here, so some changes, so I'll do that.
Zach, did you have anything for us today?
Uh, two quick items and really just kind of looking ahead to the next agenda, uh, and, and a comment on, uh, to touch on a comment from a, uh, one of our public comments earlier. The Wyandotte County Appraisers Office will be here to make a presentation regarding property values, um, next week. They've made a request, they're making kind of the rounds at the other governing bodies. They've asked to be at the agenda, at the second agenda in March to discuss with the council, essentially as appraisals are coming out, give everybody an update on that. They did have a property tax appraisal in Edwardsville a couple of weeks ago, which kind of explained, this is prior to, uh, valuations being out, but explained to people their formula and kind of walked them through the appeals process. I know they're holding different meetings, essentially the same as that, those same kind of property valuation clinics, uh, around the county. Uh, we put out the dates of those in the hot shot and we'll, we'll get those online. Uh, we've got those online, I should say, on our social media. So I know they're, they're trying to get out in front of as many people as they can to explain that process. And in as much as we can provide a venue, then we will, we'll continue to do that. And then there will be included in your staff report on the next agenda, and it should have been on this agenda, just my oversight that it wasn't, but a, a, a report, uh, essentially a twenty-twenty-two report from our police department, kind of recapping some of their activities. So we'll, we'll provide some of that.
What date was that, Zach?
That'll be the twenty, so what day?
I mean, the appraisers thing, what day was that?
That'll be on, they, they asked to appear at the ci, in front of the city council two weeks from now.
Oh, two, twenty-seven.
There are, there are different dates between now and then and after then at different parts around the county where they're kind of holding those property tax valuation clinics. I think this is more of a, a gen, uh, an update to the council specifically about Edwardsville's valuations and, and kind of the different trends and data points that they're seeing at this point.
Thanks.
That'll be, I can't email it to them yet. Yeah.
Just the overview, the snapshot of just the police department activities were included for this, just didn't get to the agenda. We can either email it to you or you can have it in this package.
Next pack.
Either, I, I'd like it included in the next packet as well, even if we're getting it emailed early, that way the public has access to it.
Yeah, 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 of course. The public will have access to it either way. We, we tend to make those reports on, on the website whenever they're available. But yeah, we'll get it to you guys and via email and then we'll make sure to include it in the pack.
Perfect. Thank you, Zach. Mister Nye, any, um, updates from you?
I don't have any additional.
Yes, uh, you have a full report of some police stuff, but lots more IT stuff. After eighteen months, we finally finished our fiber project and will say, timing wise, the, uh, the addition of this new equipment will make that, the capacity is there with the new equipment, it isn't with, with the equipment that we have. So we'll experience, uh, a better experience, if you will, uh, with, with these two things in combination. What we've been able to do through CARES, not, not the city, uh, but at Wyandotte County, uh, they put fiber infrastructure in, uh, goes down Ninety-Eighth Street, goes back around, connects all these buildings now. And so that is in place. We should, uh, uh, once, once the capacity is up and going, we, we should have a better experience in our kind of computing world. So that, that is finally done. What you're seeing now, uh, you probably haven't received an email since about nine o'clock this morning. That's because the cutover for, from the exchange, uh, product that we are on to office three sixty-five occurred. And that's because of some, uh, security vulnerabilities of the, from, from the vendor side on exchange. Exchange just has not been, uh, the product where they want to go from security, and so they moved it to three sixty-five. You have some instructions in front of you. There's an opportunity to use a, uh, uh, scan QR code. I encourage you to do that, just makes the install just that much easier. But you're going to be honest, Outlook on your phone, okay? And then you have the Outlook web access, which is also how that works. You can do it from any computer, so you're, so you're not without your emails. And, uh, if you have any, uh, questions, comments, or needs of IT support, I will, uh, I'll be glad to help out wherever I can.
See a QR code on this one?
Oh, well, when you go into the product, when you start to go, it will, it will say, hey, you need to have.
Okay.
One of the things that requires that you do is have an authenticator. The one they want you to use is Microsoft Authenticator, of course. Uh, and that is easy because it will say, hey, do this step, do this step. It kind of walks you through it and that will be that QR code.
Okay.
There'll be a button that says scan for it and it really just says, okay, you've been verified, authenticated, uh, and then you can use the product. So it's, it's, it's fairly straightforward, but it was a little intimidating if you go through. If there's any errors or anything, there is a button that says retry. And if you can't get past that, just give me a call or shoot me a text or whatever, and I can sure help you. Um, Unleashed Pets, which has been our rescue partner for seemingly ever a day, uh, it's been a, been a good, good partner for us. They've had an injunction, uh, in the Department of Agriculture and they're, they're not allowed to take our pets anymore. Uh, we've kind of anticipated, given some complaints and investigation and things, uh, to make a change. Uh, we stayed in court for the time being over this last couple of weeks. Uh, we've been talking to the Kansas City Humane Society and AK. They have a, a product that we think we can, uh, number one, afford. And number two, it's accessible to Wyandotte County residents. We do get dogs at a couple of Kansas City, Kansas and other places. So, you know, the travel distance, that was one of the things. We've talked to places all over, but we think right now for us, uh, that would be the best place as an alternative. Uh, and so we're still working on the details of what their expectations are, where our expectations are and that sort of thing. But they're, but they're used, they're used to housing, uh, you know, through municipalities and things, other animals as part of the impound. Uh, we do have a temp, we work with the Bonner Animal Clinic for temporary housing, so that after hours and on the weekends. And they will take our ten-day quarantines because that's something that unleash didn't do and no one would give any sign. So if a dog is bitten, has, doesn't have a proper paperwork and we so choose to impound it and have a ten-day quarantine, the Bonner Animal Clinic does that, of course, little board. But they, they, their, their position is they're, they've got plenty of, uh, uh, animals in their facility as it is. So the, the least amount that we can have there is the better. So they're, they're not willing to be that full partner, which is okay because this works out, of course. Uh, we're just making that switch. We're doing the research and we're going to make those changes fairly soon because we simply have to. Uh, we had eighty-two animal control calls last year, uh, but we don't impound that all. It's, uh, those are around anywhere from about fifty-four to sixty-five. That's kind of the range there here. That's how many primarily dogs that we have in that. So, uh, and, uh, no kills. These are no kill shelters and, uh, that's where. And recall, Unleashed Pets, mission, Kansas City, Kansas for the longest time, it's been for more modern years. Uh, when there's, well, there was a number of municipalities using it and that's how we got recommended to them, uh, some, some years ago is with Kansas City, Kansas. Uh, they are working on moving forward and getting their license back because they're communicating with us. However, I think we're going to come into kind of going the long term with the Humane Society, if that all comes together. That's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Lynn?
Phil Harris, congratulations on putting fire department and. I'll contact the chief of D, so I'll figure out this email server stuff. On that, uh, we would like to issue this, uh, so Dustin and the developer for Hollow Ridge, I'll go to the vet two, fire academy classes, Johnson Academy, K dowd, we'll get each over there. Free fire by academy fire departments and all numerous types, K-9 police officers and police department legalizing homes there. So we get that type of asset and value given.
Very good. Thank you. See?
Uh, we're going to continue to try to do a little patching as well as the weather changes, of course. And we've also started putting on a lot of signage along some of the roads, sports, sports road and so a lot of the kind of, yeah, we're going to sort of get it on the place.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Can we make sure, uh, on the road, you know, you're prioritizing our roads, asphalt roads for repair? Just make sure we include that the short road on Kansas Avenue, the one west of, uh, Hundred Tenth Street that runs down to Hollow Center. It's just make sure that's on the list and let's look at that one. I, I think we all have that same email that, you know, the, the resident was complaining about being high in the middle and it, it is. It's, it's pretty rough. And then the, the second thing on that road, our, our trash vendor is going down just right to the Hollow Center and basically to this driveway of a, of, of eleven-three-two-seven Kansas Avenue. He's stopping there and then he's backing up into the next driveway to the east. And you may know who it is, Mister Bishop, uh, but our, the, the big trash truck, the heavy trash truck is backing into that gravel asphalt or gravel, gravel and clay driveway is just rutting it up pretty bad. Uh, and again, that's the first driveway to the east of eleven-three-two-seven Kansas Avenue. I don't know how we get word to him about trying not to do that or, but, but he's doing quite a bit of damage. You know what I'm talking about?
I, I, I haven't seen, I, I, it, it's, it's a challenge when you have a dead-end street.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Where do they go?
Just, we, see what we can do because of, of all, of all driveways, that one's pretty rough and it's, you know, the resident there is, uh, complaining about that. I think that's, I think that's it right now. But I'm glad to hear about the fiber. That was one of my questions about the new, new computer you was talking about. So glad that we already have that fiber in place and. So glad that we already have that fiber in place, and that'll be compatible with the, with new, new structure. Thank you.
Chief Mathis, again, thanks for all of your IT work over the years and, and we, yeah, exactly. Really do appreciate it. It's been a, been a godsend from that standpoint, I really do appreciate it. Also, Chief Wood, I drove up into Highland the other day and noticed all the houses have, have been utilized for training, and that is an awesome opportunity. Really, that's great that we've been able to use that and share it with some of our neighboring municipalities. About three or four weeks ago, there was this big hunk and arrow pointing east as you're coming south to approaching the roundabout. What in the heck was that about?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I thought maybe we had a remedial driving test or something.
There was a remedial driving test prior to that.
So, I, it is very important to have transparency with, with the public. It is also very important that your elected officials have the ability to do their job effectively, efficiently, and address needs, urgent needs, and felt needs. And I think that's, I think is one of the things we, we've kind of left out of the discussion is sometimes there's some passion, passionate felt needs that need to be addressed. And, and we need to have the freedom to express those to one another in a public setting, being most transparent as opposed to doing that behind closed doors or in emails between staff and individuals. And so I think putting that as a policy, as opposed to making ordinance, makes it a much better document overall and a much less expensive document overall.
If I might just, and I meant to put this out tonight, but it reminded me. So LKM does have their, coming up, their, I think, mayor governing, council, mayor governing body. 14th. Yes, I, maybe we did get them out, so I printed those, so just meant to remind them of that.
Thank you. Councilman Bishop?
Mike, you getting any update on 110th, I mean, I-70th? As far as. The boondoggle up there, not the sewer side, the hard rock side. Well, I can tell you the reason I'm wearing a tie today because I, I was in, it was a trustee trial that was held, that was ongoing over the next couple of days. I was summoned to appear in that court, testify on that. So the trustee case basically has to do with getting directions on the remaining funds that are held by the trustees as to how to disperse those funds. You know, to, you know, back to the bondholders or portions of that that should go to the developer for expenses. So that, that part is ongoing. And then the other part of it is there is a, there is a case within the Kansas District Court that also is basically between the bondholders and the developers. So nothing's going on. I mean, I believe that the, I mean, to the best of my knowledge, the land itself is, and again, there are several pieces to that, right? Is that the land is open for purchase. I mean, it can be developed and purchased. I know there's been some interest in that area on both sides of the road for projects, not, not an industrial warehouse project. So, I mean, there, there's certainly interest up there, but as far as anything sad or specific, not. Not at seven and a half percent. Certainly, that has made, made things more difficult in some cases. Yeah, that's what happened today. Okay, that's it, thanks.
Councilman Moll?
Yeah. I appreciate the, I know that when we started this transparency ordinance resolution policy, I was pretty negative about that, but I'm be, I'm feeling an awful lot better right now. And I think that that's the proof that this city council does work well together. And we had very, I think we had positive dialogue through the whole thing. I know sometimes there's overreactions on some of us older guys that have been here for a while. But I do feel good about the, the progress that we're making on that right now. So all is not negative on the Mollat side here. There's, there is some positives there. I'm going to say this one. C E on 110th Street, I know you know the lady that I'm going to mention. The silt is coming across 110th. I know that that's Bonner Springs, and I know that whatever those rules are called, silt fence or whatever they are. Is there any way that we can contact the company on that side to do something about that? So we don't have to keep using our equipment to clean that street up? And we got quite an investment in that, you know, for, to try to track people in. And when you have all that silling coming across that road, I really think somebody should be held accountable for that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have spoken to them recently. There were some questions, what would be on the far south end of that project where that silt fencing is down? It needs to be brought back.
I'm really thinking more along the lines of the roundabout itself on the southwest corner of that circle.
Okay.
Where that silling is, is coming down, and I don't know, it's probably going into the sewer system underneath and then going out on the other property that I won't mention the name, but I know you know. But I think something, somebody should be held accountable for what's occurring up there.
I agree. I think there's more things that can be done, I just don't know what are, basically down to our systems.
I would like to see some, study some options on something with that. Maybe legal can get involved in that or something.
I, I will tell you that we have, we, I mean, at the end of last, kind of at the end of the growing season and preparation. So we did do some fall seeding, both of the medians and on both sides of the road, behind the sidewalks. Obviously, it's a little early for that to come up. Hopefully, some of that will help. There may be some additional seeding.
Well, when you're on the north side of River View, when you're on River View and the north side of that project, they put that matting down.
Correct.
Did they ever do that on the east side or the west side of 110th Street? I think that would keep a lot of that.
Anyway, yeah, we did do some originally with the street project.
Because it just looks like weed. I'm just bringing that up. I'd like to have something, you know, something about that because it's ridiculous to have that sand silled all over that new road like that. Okay, talked about, real dialogue, talked about that. Progress on Highland, I'm really happy to always ask about the RH idea, and I'm sure glad to see that there's going to be some dirt moved up there once the houses get burnt down. Thank the fire department for that. I think that that makes a name for Edwardsville when you have those opportunities for training for other communities and other people. And I asked the mayor, is there any progress or any kind of a, of a way that we're going to go about selecting a new city manager? Anything going to work on that?
I was going to bring that in my statement tonight. So I'll just, so what we started out with is updating our job description. Mike has worked on that, and being that he's been here for a decade and a half, a little bit more, that's changed a lot in the last, last several years. And so Mike's worked on getting that updated. I have actually got a couple of emails out to other cities to just get us some draft copies of other job descriptions. So my goal is to send that out to the council as soon as I get those. And then next week or so, I'll send you one that we have now, and then just get some feedback individually on, hey, guys, is this, is there anything we need to tweak or adjust moving forward? And so that's where we'll start at and then move on from there. We just needed to find the job before we can.
Just thinking it's like, what, four months away? How, how far away is it? You don't have it marked?
I don't have it marked. I don't have one of those clocks, sorry.
That's all I have.
Councilman Trev?
Couple of things. Mayor Kayhart, I want to thank you and your crew for your annual, or bi-monthly, that work every other month. Food Drive Harvesters Mobile Pantry that Mayor Kayhart organizes and runs and puts it together and feeds many, many, many families because that's, anybody's been in the grocery store lately. Any free food that you can get for a family is certainly welcome. So thank you for doing that. Chief Mathis, Erin Kraus, that's quite an honor. I know Chief Widdam has had employees come. I know you've had employees come when they're recognized for big achievements. Is there any wish you could come by sometime? I know that's easier said than done. I just think it's a, it's a very big honor, and I think we as a council would really enjoy congratulating these employees. That we, that goes for city staff, it goes for public works. Anybody gets a big achievement like that, I think it's, it's an honor to come. We would certainly like to congratulate them. I know fire departments come over for different things. We've, I think you've had some officers come. Anyway, if we could, if there's any way that's possible, I know their schedules are different, but that goes for any of the staff.
The way we handle that is we ask them how, what's our comfort level?
Right.
Some people are better at the being in front.
Sure. But certainly.
Four boys at home and after hours, that sort of thing.
So, you know. Right.
I think the preference was to make the announcement this way.
I understand.
If somebody's willing to come stand up here, let's do it.
Understand, right, get their picture taken, sure. C E, is there any way, oh, I've slept since then, is there, is there a list or a map or a diagram of what streets are going to get worked on this year? That way it might help Mr. Johnson or.
We've started trying to put together that five-year plan.
Right. Okay, that way if it's published, that way it gives people a better idea. So appreciate that, appreciate, and then warm weather's coming, so hopefully be able to get out and get that done. And I do appreciate the conversations, the ideas, the collaboration that we as a council can set up here and come to agreements on. I know it took a, seemed like it took a while, but I think a lot of good ideas are exchanged, a lot of opinions that really matter. And I think at the end of the day, we all are up here striving for the same goals. So I appreciate all that conversation tonight, so that's all I have.
All right, I'm going to try to knock this out quick. I've got a little list. I, I think most of us received an email regarding Kansas Avenue, since that was on our possible priority list. I have driven it, and as you get toward the Hollow Center, it is basically not a street anymore. We have chunks falling off, and so I just wanted, I don't know, C E, if you got a copy of that email? If not, maybe we could forward it to you. Okay, I'll, I'll send you a copy of that. It was from a resident who lived down there, and it's, it's pretty bad. So congratulations to Officer Kraus, that is a great accomplishment, and we're really happy for her and to have her serving our city. I understand, but hopefully have we got, you know, like a certificate or plaque or something like that, like.
Yep, plaque, little gift card.
Very good, very good. Well, at least let her know that we greatly appreciate her service. Mobile pantry, we served over 600 people, 11,632 pounds of food. People are definitely in need in our community. We had, the line usually goes up to about the railroad tracks, and we hosted at the community center. People are waiting for hours to get a trunkload of groceries. And so I think that's a great thing to keep in mind as we're working on budgets and talking about appraisals and how this all affects people in their day-to-day lives.
Anybody can come to that or just.
Anyone in the community, we just ask that they register in advance so that we have enough groceries for everyone. Also, just while we're talking about it, that if they follow the city of Edwardsville's Facebook page, Zach is so helpful to post that registration for us about two weeks before every event. CPPS recently started an adopt a planer program. So I just wanted to thank, we've got two folks already that have jumped on board to sponsor planters at our Edwardsville Cemetery, and I'm just so thankful for the time that they're going to invest in making that a great, a great place and kind of beautifying part of our city. Zach, I was going to see if we could include or do another update. I know you've already done this on Facebook before about the senior tax rebate through Wyandotte County. Maybe do another Facebook post as people are feeling the pinch a little bit this week. I'm almost done. Mowing season is right around the corner, grass is turning green. It would be wonderful if we could get city staff before our mowing starts to get litter crews on the side of the road that's kind of getting noticeable now the snow's gone and before we mow all the trash into confetti to get this picked up while they're still in one piece. So thanks, everybody, have a great evening.
Hey, and when you mentioned elderly, you don't say guys, you say guy.